Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 4th Select Board Meeting. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and get into any announcements. Ed, did you say you have an announcement?
Yeah. November 11th, 11, 11, 11, 11th month, 11th day, 11th hour. There'll be a Veterans Day ceremony in front of Town Hall, which will include the American Legion, the Auxiliary Ladies Auxiliary of the American Legion, the Sons of the American Legion, and American Legion Riders. So, and there will be the Honor Guard present. So if you want to attend, it'll be at 11 o'clock on the 11th. So that's Veterans Day. Of course, it'll be proper spacing, mask, and making sure we do everything correctly. Okay.
You've got to watch it because the boss is here.
That's right.
I seek you.
So, thank you, Ed. And that's always actually a really nice ceremony. I like to try to get down there whenever I can. So just a couple of quick announcements. First, on some 350th business. So, we've sort of worked out this really unique thing for the 350th. And I have to give a big thank you to Kathy Olson, a resident from town who helped the 350th Committee on this. But she's worked with the postmaster. And there's going to be a special Hatfield 350th postmark that goes on to anything mailed on December 17th, 18th, or 19th. So that's the cancellation that goes across your stamp. And it's going to be this special 350 commemorative. So it might be, we wanted to let people know so they could think about maybe getting their Christmas cards out then, holiday cards. Maybe they want to mail something to themselves so they have one of these postmarks. But we just wanted to let people know, we'll certainly get some more information out. Something will be up on the website. But again, it's December 17th, 18th, and 19th. And a big thank you to the postmaster and Kathy Olson for doing that. It's really something kind of unique and, yeah, that we can do as something special. I also want to mention that Luminaryum is going to be a little bit different this year. And there's going to be fireworks launched that evening, early. I'm not sure what time exactly they go off. I don't want to get into the details today, but people are going to want to look for some information and some advice about Luminaryum because of COVID and some of the things that have to change. And so, we will be getting information about that out to residents very soon. So just stay tuned for that. Like I said, I don't want to get into the details of it because I don't want to say anything wrong or put wrong information out there, but just keep an eye out for that. I want to thank, do two thank yous. First, to Lydia Zish, our town clerk, and all of our election workers because this has been a wild election season with mail-ins, with early voting, with yesterday, and the count, and everything else. And they did a great job, as always. And I just want to make sure we recognize them and let them know how much we appreciate them and can trust our elections here in town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which is something that is refreshing today.
Yeah.
And then also, the other thank you I want to give is to the people who participated in the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant meetings that we had. So the last three Monday nights in a row, we had two-hour online meetings that were actually very well attended by people, some just citizens who were interested, people from various boards. We had Officer Kennedy was on one. Selectman Jaworski joined me all three nights. We were there. And, you know, we had the fire chief, we had people from planning board, we had people from the business community that came to all three meetings. And the purpose of it was to sort of identify Hatfield's strengths and vulnerabilities with respect to climate change. And a lot of really good ideas came out of this. And it will put us in line to try to get some grant funding for a variety of different potential projects. So it was really important work. It was time-consuming. So people who made the effort, it was really appreciated. And their input, you know, we had, like Darrell was there, and it was so great to have him there to be able to talk about agricultural things when issues came up. And Phil came to want, I mean, so it was really just a huge amount of information. So it was, it was really good. And I just wanted to make sure.
I want to say, I was really impressed with the younger folks that attended that.
Yeah.
I was really impressed by not only them attending, but their knowledge of the town and stuff like that. I was, I was impressed by that.
Yeah, I would agree with that. They had, they, you know, they brought some different areas of expertise and it was, and really interesting perspectives, very, you know, intelligent. And it was really, it was long, and it was three Monday nights in a row, but really, I did enjoy it. It was, it was a worthwhile exercise. So that was all I had. You said?
I had said no, but I did have one thing just to remind the residents of. Not sure when they'll see this, but a reminder that both the tax bills and the water bills are in fact due. And the office, the collector's office will be open tomorrow, Thursday, the 5th of November to accept your payments if you don't do it online. And they're open tomorrow, Thursday, from 1:00 to 5:00. So, just a gentle reminder for all you folks out there that haven't had the pleasure of writing those checks yet. But that's all I had, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, great. I am going to, if everyone's all set, Marlene, anything? Okay. I am going to read the, our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Select Board. Okay, so we, is anyone here for public form?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody online, Marlene, maybe, for public form?
Yeah. I am Diana.
Okay. Is that Larry Grossman?
Larry Grossman.
Okay. Hi, Larry.
Hi, Diana.
Shoot. The flag is yours.
Go ahead, Larry.
Oh, all right. On the agenda, I have just a comment about item, well, it says topic six, but it's really seven. The special town meeting more in quorum. And I don't know exactly what you're going to discuss today, but I know there's been a emergency law that the governor allows to reduce the quorum significantly. And I was just going to weigh in that I hope that the selectmen who can unilaterally embrace this change don't take it down to such a low level that the people among yourself and the finance committee would equal the quorum. So maybe instead of going to the absolute minimum, if you do want to reduce the quorum, which I don't know if it has to be reduced because with this kind of meeting, we could have people online. But I'd hope that you don't reduce it down to seven or whatever the, I forget what the low number is that the governor allowed. And it would really be able to, just the people at the table would meet the quorum requirements.
Understood. So we will take that into consideration when we get to that portion of the discussion.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't know what you discussed previously on this topic on quorum, but I saw it on the agenda, so I just wanted to weigh in.
Right. I mean, for the annual town meeting, we were able, we reduced it, but not as far down as we could go.
Yeah.
This, this meeting has to happen. So the number has to be carefully selected, Larry. We can't take a chance of not meeting quorum. It's, it could be cold. It's, you know, so we'll, we'll be thoughtful in that process.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, minutes.
I will make a motion to accept the minutes from October 7th, 2020.
I'll second that.
A motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, COVID update. Carrie, do you want to do it now or you want to move forward? We'll skip you.
I'll go first.
Okay. Do you, do you have like, okay, that's fine. Look, come on forward. I'm sure you have, yes.
Mr. Paul Peckard, he's a potential new hire for us. I'd like you to take him into consideration.
Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm just having a chance to look at this right now.
So, if I may. So first, I would say, welcome, Paul. And then I would ask you, is it Peckard or is it Picard?
I go Peckard.
Peckard, okay.
You go Peckard. Okay.
Thank you. I always like to get the pronunciations correct. So it doesn't mean I'm not going to mispronounce it later, but I at least like to ask and start off on the right foot.
No, I agree.
Thank you.
So, you know, obviously, some, some good background in law enforcement and also some, you know, impressive background in construction site work. So you could actually like work the detail and work the job at the same time, right? That could kill two birds with one stone. Yeah. Yes. I mean, I'm kidding, of course. But that's, that's great. I mean, I'm, you know, it's, it's always nice to have more officers join the ranks and particularly ones with, with excellent backgrounds. So happy, happy to welcome you to Hatfield and have you aboard. And you'll be evenings?
Yes. Evening and weekends and holidays.
Yep.
Whatever day it is.
Well, I think you're going to like it here.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah. Excellent.
Do we need official vote on this?
To appoint.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to appoint Paul Peckard as a Hatfield Police Department Police Officer.
I'll second that and say, welcome to the Town of Hatfield, Paul.
Yeah. Yep.
So a motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Easy.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Again, thank you, and thanks for bringing him in.
Bring him in. That's a good thing to say to a police officer. Thanks for bringing him in.
Well, I just told Larry, shoot.
You're welcome.
And I said, let Larry talk. I said, shoot. And then I thought, maybe that's not a good thing.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Good night.
So Carrie, you want us to do everything and get back to you, or do you want to?
I'll talk now if you don't have to.
You'll talk now. You don't want to stay here all night?
No, I don't want to stay all night.
And use the sewer abatements?
No, I'm good with that, too.
So Carrie Flaherty, I called you Carrie gone last night. Carrie Flaherty is joining us this evening to do a COVID update, which I find very useful. I think it's really important for townspeople to be seeing you on a, on a regular basis. And, you know, I'm sure there's plenty to report, so.
There is. So, I don't even know where to start. Well, first, I'll start with Hatfield has no new cases still. That's a good thing. We, the governor came out with new guidelines that go into effect Friday morning at 12:01 a.m. This Friday, the 7th, right?
Six.
Six, whatever day. My days are behind, sorry, the 6th.
Yep.
So, everybody can get those definitely online. If you go to mass.gov, it'll give you COVID updates and new guidelines, et cetera. And you can actually watch his speech if you really, or his, whatever. You can watch that on, his press conference, that's the word I'm looking for. But basically, the gist of it, how it's going to affect Hatfield is public places. So, places that are open to the public, that the public can just come in, is basically how it was explained, how I understand it, but also the research that I've done on it to make sure that we put the guidelines where they need to be. So, for instance, I'll use an example. A place like Brockway Smith is not a public business. You can't, they don't, they're not allowing anybody inside right now, so it's just their employees. They, they stay and follow under the guidelines that were already set in place.
Okay.
Places like here at the Town Hall, which is a public place, next week, when we are only public on the two days that we're open in the afternoon until after the fire suppression system is dealt with and done, we, the days that we are closed to the public, you still follow the old guidelines. The days we are open to the public, everybody in the building must be wearing a mask at all times, no matter if you're sitting in your office by yourself or, well, I shouldn't say that. If you're by yourself in your office, you can have your mask off, but the minute somebody comes to your door or comes in, you must put your mask on.
Or if you work with more than one person in the office.
Right. That was going to be my next thing. But if you work in an office that there is more than one person in the office at the time, then everybody in the office must be wearing masks at all times. Originally, when I read it, I got to be honest, I thought it was still the under, I thought it was, I read it wrong, basically. So I thought we were still okay with the way we had set up for the people, where we have offices with additional people in it, but it's not. It still is the standard, people who have medical reasons. If there is an employee, no matter what public building we have, that has a medical reason to not be able to wear a mask, all we do need, we do definitely need is a letter from your doctor that says you can't wear a mask because of X, Y, and Z. Obviously, that stays amongst a small, much smaller group of people knowing that, obviously. But we do need the documentation, or you will be required to be wearing the mask.
And in that case, we would need to put up some type of barrier system, right?
Correct. So we would have to put a barrier system up around the person, who, the employee, so that there is a shield between them and anybody that might come in contact with them at any point.
Okay. And they should limit their travels throughout the building.
Correct.
As much as possible.
Correct. Here, so far, we don't have that, but it could change, obviously, for any reason. So just so people are aware. Places like the highway garage, because it is locked to the public. The fire station, the door is locked to the public unless somebody answers the door. You can't just go in there, so it's not truthfully a public building. The police station, for them behind their closed doors, again, you can get into the little lobby, but behind it, they're not considered truthfully a public place. So they, the employees that are behind those doors, should still be under the six-foot distancing, wearing masks like we have had in new effect. But otherwise, they don't have to be wearing them constantly if they're distanced apart, et cetera. And the only other thing, because it really only affects, but I'd like to make this point, because I think we are the only people, my husband and I, being in an ambulance together or in a fire truck, we live in the same household. We, together, are not required to have to wear a mask at all times because we live in the same household. I don't think we have any other employees in town that have, fall into the same criteria. But if you live in the same household with somebody, you don't have to be wearing a mask under the six-foot distancing in a, in a workplace, in a workspace, as long as there aren't others around. If that makes sense?
It does. I guess I would say, I would hope that employees who are maybe in the situations that don't require a mask would consider still wearing one.
Correct.
Because, you know, think about how difficult it would be if we had a COVID outbreak among town employees. Right? We don't have a town of spare town employees. So if people had to quarantine, or even quarantine until they got negative tests or were sick, it would, it would create a hardship. So I, you know, numbers are going up and...
I'll use this as an example, just to throw, put it out there in case somebody actually asks about it.
Right.
Or whatever. But, I mean, I know that even myself and my husband in the ambulance together, we wear our masks even sitting in the front of the truck, so it's not. So, then, in addition to the mask-wearing part of the policy, or the mask-wearing, or the guidelines, indoor functions have been lowered back down to 25 people minimum, or maximum, I mean, sorry. 10 per household at a residence. It can't be more than 10 people at anybody's residence at one time. But event places, so for instance, again, in Hatfield, the Legion, Fish Tales doesn't fall as an event place. So I really, I only can really use the Legion as a place because they're really, the only indoor facility we have that you can put an event on at. The event cannot be more than 25 people. And that square footage still falls into the guidelines, too, from the previous guidelines. So it's the eight people per thousand square feet. And I don't honestly, truthfully, know how big the Legion is, so I can't...
I don't think it's big enough to have 25, that's for sure.
I'm sure it probably isn't. But I have been in contact with the auxiliary members. They're, I don't know if it's a president or whatever of their group, but they have reached out to me and looking, asking regularly about guidelines and when they change. So they are aware of that, just so that, I feel bad because it clearly affects them just as much as it has affected us not being able to have bars and restaurants open the way we would like to, because they can't have events in there, which is clearly how they are able to raise money to keep the Legion going, et cetera. So I, it's not me, again, I'm not the one who doesn't want everybody to be able to do what they're supposed to.
We understand that.
Or what they would like to do. However, an outside event, because Hatfield is considered a low-risk community still, our outdoor gatherings can have up to 100 people. So anywhere that is not a low-risk community can only have up to 50 people for outdoor events. So again, if you had something at the pavilion, you could have up to 100 people for an event outside if you really wanted to.
Then Ed was talking about would be, I mean, because there's never a hundred people there.
Correct. So the event outside next week, as long as masks are being worn, because again, I was going to get to the next part of the mask-wearing and the outside stuff. It, they're saying that people even walking on the streets now are supposed to be wearing masks also. So if you're out for a walk, walking around town, you're supposed to be wearing a mask. Oh, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification, because I was going to ask you that, and I didn't want to put you on the spot.
It's very, this new...
That's how I interpreted it as well.
So this new guideline is very, very strict.
Public space, in or out.
So public, outdoor, indoor space, you must have a mask.
I take a walk so early in the morning, I barely even see a car pass me.
So my suggestion, me personally, is that you have it on you. So I went for a walk with my daughter last night. We each had a mask with us. We put, and literally, I mean, I'll do it now for a second, but I wear my mask like this. So as I walk down the street and I see somebody coming the other direction, I'm able to go like this. You pass by, or if you sit and chat because you know who it is, whatever, at least everybody's protected.
Gotcha.
And just so everybody knows, it's ages five and up are expected to be wearing the mask. And ages two to five, it's suggested they wear a mask, but if they can't or don't want to, et cetera, because of the age, it's okay. And then two and under, it's obviously, again, a parental decision. If your child's willing to wear the mask, then it's better for them to have one on, but it's not required. So for instance, going back to your event next week on Veterans Day, absolutely, if there's 50 of you out here, that's fine, as long as everybody has a mask on at the time, unless there's a medical reason. Obviously, they don't have to then. And then you can do your event because we are a low-risk town, so that doesn't prevent us from anything like of those kinds of events.
And I'm, people seem to have gotten pretty good about both wearing masks and sort of spreading out at things like this.
Yeah. And I'm not, we've done well in the town, so I'm not super concerned about that.
Can I just talk about Luminaryum for a minute? Because it's why, you know, I touched on this during announcements. You know, we have to keep going by what is happening at the moment, and I would be very surprised if restrictions lessened between now and the holidays. So that's why we're, we will put out information, because it's not going to look like what it normally looked like. That sort of everybody coming...
And the Fire Association is the one who truthfully ends up putting on Luminaryum. And I can tell you that it's been discussed. And we discussed it on Monday at our COVID meeting, and then these guidelines came out on Tuesday. So it was, we had really had a really good, in-depth conversation about it, about like figuring out planning, not having certain things, but maybe having the gathering. Now, that's been all, it's all thrown out the window with these new guidelines, and I don't see these guidelines changing between now and Luminaryum. So truthfully, in regards to Luminaryum, I really think we're only going to have people being able to put the lights in their driveway or their sidewalks, et cetera, like they normally do, so people can drive around town with their headlights on, just so everybody is aware of that. The police chief, that day specifically, there is going to be extra police patrol on, et cetera. And the police chief has made it abundantly clear that everybody must have their headlights on because it is a safety-driving situation. So I'm trying to get that out as much as I can. He and I have had a great conversation about that. So people will be able to drive around town. And then I know that, Diana, you and I have talked, and I know the fire chief has been talked with the fireworks group that's put, doing that part. And so at whatever point that happens, I know you guys have talked about shutting down traffic basically completely so that the fireworks can block, people can watch them.
Yeah, so that's what I didn't want to get into too much tonight.
Oh, sorry.
Because I wanted to, that, all that information will come out in one, one announcement, but we are working on a traffic plan.
Yep.
A COVID-safe plan. And we just want people to remember...
So really, it's only going to be fireworks and people looking at the lights in people's driveway. That's basically, at this point, what Luminaryum is going to be this year. There's not going to be anything extra.
It's sort of a stroll-drive thing.
Correct. I mean, people who want to walk can walk, obviously. We've talked about that, too. But it's really just, you get to look in the lights of the driveway, and you get to stand and watch the fireworks from wherever you decide, because the fireworks will be seen everywhere.
Well, if you want to remind people that you can see the fireworks from everywhere.
Everywhere.
Everywhere. You're going to be able to see them from, there's no need to sort of congregate down here. You're going to be able to see the fireworks from Hadley.
Right. And as much as people really enjoy Luminaryum in this town and they come from all over, we still want you to come through and be able to drive through and see the lights. And people still put the bags and their, their candles and all that stuff out, but it's not going to be the same Luminaryum that we've had in the past of singing and caroling and...
Right.
And truthfully, like I said, that's all changed since Monday.
The cocoa and everything over there.
Yeah. The fire department will be able to do their thing. We probably have to send a little letter to Santa and tell him that he shouldn't come down a couple days before Christmas to show his visit like he always does, because it'll be a wasted trip for him because we won't be able to have the kids be able to see him.
Well, you know, we'll see about coming through.
We'll see. Maybe Santa will come anyways, I don't know.
You know, I mean, we're like, we're going to put up, we shouldn't have horses down there because of the fireworks. So we have some people who bring these awesome horse-drawn carriages. That'll be part of our announcement that, you know, that has nothing to do with COVID. But it probably just won't be safe to have horses down there. So that will all be part of a very informative, complete announcement that comes out. So just, just keep an eye on. But I think it is important for people to start thinking about where they might want to watch the fireworks from. And I think there's a lot of locations throughout town.
And people are, we're talking, planning on holidays and stuff like that are coming up, and people just need to realize that numbers in this state are high now. Today, the daily report came out, and we have 1,629 positive cases in Massachusetts from yesterday.
One day, yeah.
One day. And we've been averaging, we went from having an average of like 800, 700 to 800 cases, we went up to 1,100, 1,200, and now we've jumped drastically to 1,600, which is a lot of, I know it's across the state and there's a lot of people, but that's a lot of cases for what we've had. And I don't, I mean, I don't know what the, a lot of it is out east, like from Worcester to Boston, but that doesn't mean that people from around here don't travel out that way and it doesn't get brought back to Western Mass, obviously. And we've had some high numbers in certain communities in Western Mass also. So people just need to be careful. They, I mean, COVID is a thing, as much as people want to say it's not, and there's a large group of people who just don't believe it is, it is. And too many people are getting sick.
If I may, I guess I, I just want to echo that and basically just remind people, and and the people that live and work in Hatfield have been doing a great job.
Yeah.
And, and COVID can happen to anyone who's even really taking precautions. I mean, it's out there. But I just, I was just going to remind people to not be complacent because I believe, with my vast medical background, I believe it's the complacency that is the reason that these cases are increasing like that. And we're all stir-crazy, we're all sick of it. But this is why now the restrictions are getting tighter from the governor with the wearing a face mask outside even, as well as what Carrie explained previously. So I would just remind people, just, just keep wearing the mask and washing your hands and.
And not having large gatherings and fucking parties.
Yeah, keep following the guidelines.
Even at your own home, keep your gatherings to minimize.
How does that get really, that can't be really controlled.
It can be controlled. It, in all honesty, the guidelines were given out by the governor that myself and others, if I, if we appoint other health agents can go out and issue $300 civil fines to anybody that is violating the, well, the guideline.
Or the people, wow.
And so I don't want to do that. I don't, I.
Right.
I haven't had to in 10 months and I don't want to. But I receive calls all the time about certain places and certain things and complaints and et cetera. And so just so the townspeople are aware, if I have to show up at your door, it's because somebody called and said something. It's not just because I'm going to drive around town looking for problems, but I'm not going to do that.
No, we, we don't.
Neither is the police department or anybody else for that matter. Like, we're not looking for problems. It's more of educating people because some people just may not know.
Right.
I mean, and it, it's a new thing. It's the way it's going. I'm hoping we don't have to address it really in Hatfield, but just be aware, especially as we're coming into the holiday season and people are planning their gatherings, we should make sure that people, to the best of their abilities, can have smaller family gatherings for the holidays than probably what is normal for them.
Hey, we just want everyone to stay away.
Yeah.
Another Thanksgiving for two, another Christmas for two. I mean, you know.
I'm going to cook and send our meals out, I think.
It's just, it's.
It's really the safest thing to do right now. And we're coming into cold, you're like, we're coming into winter, we're coming into sick season. I mean, it started just to go one more thing of the new guidelines because I didn't hit on it. We have already shared it because we're really the only place that's open in town with Fish Tales with the owner, and he's aware of it. But places have to close by 9:30.
Right.
There is a, there is a order that in place that people are supposed to be home and not out and about from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM.
No problem.
Unless you're going.
I'm always home from 10:00.
Unless you're, unless you're a mid-shift eve or evening shift worker who's coming or going home, obviously. But so just so people are aware that if you're planning to go out to dinner in town, time it right because you're going to have, you're going to have to be gone and on your way out the door by 9:30 at these places. And so that's just another thing. Also, if you're considering to go to other communities, obviously, and other restaurants, just realize that you're timing yourself right, that you're not showing up for 8 o'clock because you're deciding to have a late dinner.
Right.
And you don't get out or you don't get your food, et cetera.
I do think along those lines, you talked about other communities and Fish Tales included in the Smithsonian. I think if it's takeout, you, you probably, you can still get, if, if they're open beyond 9:30. But it's, it's the restaurants with the indoor dining and alcohol that are, that's where the edict came down to.
Yes.
Just, just for clarification.
And I guess I just want to say, I know, I know some people are getting frustrated with these guidelines and, and we all feel it sometimes. I feel it sometimes, you know, and that sort of thing. I guess sitting here at this table, I feel a, you know, profound sense of responsibility for this community. And we've seen some local communities, like the small town of Buckland, all of a sudden went red. So it can happen and it can happen fast. And we just want to make sure that we're doing what we can here to, to keep everybody safe and keep ourselves not in, not in that, that area.
So I am working on a statement, not a sta, I don't know how, what you guys want to call it, but something that's going to come with the guidelines in order for our employees that I will send out via email so that it gets shared to all employees in the town so they know what's going to be expected to them because some things are going to change, obviously, than what the normal is. And then obviously, it, it's going to come down to that I, I particularly have to enforce it. So I just, and I, not that I don't think that this has happened, but I just hope and expect that I will get the support of the board at that point if I have to enforce it.
Yes.
That you guys will support me in that because I don't really want people getting upset with me directly. So, but it's my job, so I have to make sure people are following the rules and the guidelines.
We have to be clear about the rules and then consistent with enforcing them.
And that's, and that's my feeling is, is that if we're going to send them rules out, then everybody needs to follow them, no matter who it is, where, where you work, whatever it is. If you're an employee of the town, you're going to be expected to follow the rules. And then if you're not, then it's going to be dealt with at that point. So, which is why I like putting it in writing and sending it out to everybody because at least it's, it's, right now, it's a verbal thing. Obviously, maybe our employees don't watch this, but it's been verbally said and we'll put it in writing. So everybody gets it in writing and gets a copy. And then from there, it's, you've already been told. So it can be dealt with after that if you don't, if it's violated, whatever.
And it goes into effect Friday officially. So between your email internally, residents and folks being able to look it up online if they want, or you could probably see the governor talking about it every day at his news conference, and then our robo-call on Monday.
Correct.
Well, you know, we're just going to, we're, we're just going to keep reiterating what the guidelines.
My guidelines that go out, like the, the breakdown of the new guidelines, I'm going to put it into bullet points with where you can locate the full link.
Yep.
And I'm going to make, like our Monday weekly letter that I put together and we do our robo-call, I'm going to send it out by tomorrow night so that we can put it on our Facebook page. We can share it on the fire department and the police department page so that it gets out there. Yeah, the town website, et cetera, so that it's out tomorrow so that when it goes into effect on Friday, people have the ability to have seen it hopefully by then. We do have a good, it reaches a lot of people via Facebook, especially in the town. So, which is great. But we'll get it out there just so that people see it.
It's too bad we can't, it can't go like in the Council on Aging newsletter because it could already be outdated by the time it gets out there.
I know, I know. I will get a copy to Jerry and, because I think she might have a newsletter going out shortly. I think she hasn't, her last one for the year.
She has. There's another one coming up. The deadline to submit things is November 18th. So it must go out right after that.
I will make sure she has the copy because she'll get it anyways, but I'll ask her to put it in.
But I mean, it could be out, because things are changing.
It could. And if it updates before the 18th, I'll get her the updated copy, but at least we can get it out to the newsletter so that our seniors are informed. Because I mean, some seniors do have Facebook, which is great, but some seniors may not. So I want to make sure everybody gets informed the best we can.
I, I think the other thing also is I did see something in the paper about it, and I'm sure there'll be more. So I, I guess my point is this isn't a Hatfield thing.
Right.
This is a Massachusetts thing. So there's going to be information out there that people, you know, if it applies to the state, then it applies to Hatfield.
Right.
So if there's anything that you, you folks see.
Yep.
In, in the newspaper or any of the news organizations, if it's regarding the state, then it's regarding Hatfield is all I want to say.
And if people have questions or concerns, they clearly can call here to the town hall. Option number four gets them the Board of Health. And Kia is excellent at getting me all messages so that I can call people back or email them back. I mean, she also, if you can, if you want to email and you call here and ask for my email, she can give that to you so that you can send your questions or concerns to me directly and I can answer you right back. Just for the public to know, my work schedule has changed, so I'm not available during the day these days. Because of my work schedule, I'm available afternoons and evenings mainly. So if I don't answer you right away during the day, it's not that I'm ignoring you. You'll get an answer by the evening. Just to touch base on the schools, we, we had a great meeting with them last week and I had another one on Monday with administration. And we have a good working policy moving forward. We've had a lot of children who have been out due to different symptoms and we, and the process has worked great. The nurses are doing great in taking that information in. They get it to me. I reach back out to the parents and we get answers back and those that need to be tested are tested, et cetera. Thankfully, knock on wood, we have had zero cases in the school district, staff and students, obviously. So that is great that everybody, yeah, knock on wood, that everybody is doing what's supposed to happen. The staff has done an excellent job in getting, you know, kids are wearing masks, staffs wearing masks, hand sanitizing is happening, hand washing is being consistent and happening, and all that stuff in both buildings. So I mean, honestly, big kudos to all of them. And it's a hard thing to have to get a process going. So I just want to throw it out there that it's not gone unnoticed by anybody that they are, they're doing, they're working really hard to have a good, clean process happening at the schools and it's going well.
The students really take it seriously.
They do.
I know my daughter and her friends, they all take it very seriously.
And on top of that, I think, besides just the teachers, but in the administration, but the entire staff, I know the custodians are doing the fogging, they're wiping down everything.
Everybody's doing their, everybody's playing their part.
It's a team effort. Everybody's doing their part, which is why we're so successful.
Yes, yes.
So let's, we just need to keep that going.
Yep. And, and people are understanding. One thing, just so everybody's aware, and I think this is just more of an informative thing and only because we're coming into cold season and so more things are coming up. One thing, so everybody's aware that if you, if you or your family member is sick with any of the symptoms that are listed by the CDC, you should not be coming to work. So employees need to really know that. And it's going to go out in my letter, in my guidelines that come out with the new revised version. I'm just going to reiterate it and point it out that if you have any of the symptoms or in-house hold family member or who, or roommate or whatever has symptoms, you should be staying home, they should be getting tested, you should be getting tested, and then you return back to work. And that process, when it comes to employees, is a big deal that I've had to involve, she's still sitting behind me, I've had to involve Sharon because she's our HR person. We have to play, there's a, there's guidelines that we have to follow through the state, specific to making sure employees payroll-wise, because if you fall under a certain criteria, you get, you get paid.
Time off.
Time off, basically, versus having to burn your sick time. So it's a process. There's paperwork that has to be filled out. Sharon's done a great job and the people that we've had to do it with. But we've, we've realized in discussing it that we haven't maybe been completely on top of it with, with everybody. And we're trying to step up and make sure that we take care of it across the board. But now that we're getting into cold season, I think we're going to have a lot more of that, of employees being out, et cetera. And it's really just, what's going to have to happen is they have to contact me, tell me that they're out because of X, Y, or Z, whatever the symptoms are. And then I will send out questions back to them or talk to them via phone. And we go from there and there's, there's just a process.
Better job tracking.
It's a better job tracking. And.
That's for employees.
For employees. But and it's even for people to know that, like anybody, like if you have symptoms, you shouldn't be leaving your house, you shouldn't be going out, and your family member should be staying home with you until everybody is better. And what the CDC says is that your symptoms, you need to be symptom-free for 24 hours or more with no meds on board, and you should be tested. If you have a cough, fever, short respiratory problems, headache, fatigue, achiness, that kind of stuff, which really sounds like.
Loss of smell, loss of taste.
Loss of taste and smell, those kind of things. Those are all the symptoms. And yes, a lot of those fall under the flu category, or they could fall under, some of them fall under the strep category and stuff like that. But really, make contact with your doctor, tell them what's going on and let your doctor make the decision of, should you get tested? Do you need to get tested? Should you just stay home until you're better and you're feeling good? There, that's why you have a doctor. And if you don't have a PCP, feel free to reach out to me as a town resident and ask questions. And I'd be happy to get you guidance, whatever direction we can. But especially coming into cold season now, I just, I'm, I'm super concerned that we just need as many people informed to make sure they're making the right decisions, both residents and employees specifically. So.
Well, maybe some of that stuff will spread less too because.
Yeah, I'm hoping. I mean, again, knock on wood, I think even with our kids that have had a handful of stuff in the schools, they're not, we haven't had, they're not super-spreaders. They've figured that out with all of this, is that the kids aren't super-spreaders. So luckily, school districts aren't spreading the virus quickly or at all. So, which is a good thing. I think I touched base on everything and I'm sorry I took up a ton of your time, but.
Sorry. It, it's all good information for residents to hear.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Very much for everything.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie.
We have a sewer abatement request for Seven Nolan Circle.
I will make a motion to a, to approve that abatement. This was for a swimming, a new swimming pool, and we are abating the sewer bill, a portion of the sewer bill, which equals the amount of water that went into the pool. And we've got all the paperwork that.
It's documented in a standard.
Thank you. That's the word I was looking for. We have all the documentation.
And this is a standard abatement that we make regularly.
I, I'll second that. But in the future, if they could, they could actually list how many gallons they use would be helpful. I mean, it's easy, it's easy to go online and figure it out because it's 18 by 36. So.
Oh, that's, that's 13,000 gallons. That's what my pool is. It's not like, it's not like I know every pool size and how much water goes in it, by the way, Ed. I'm not that good. But yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Okay, yeah. So a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we've already done the officer appointment. So financial update. Marlene.
So at, at our meeting with the finance committee last week, we had addressed the current FY '20 audit. And I have been in touch with Tony Roselli, the auditor, and they have completed the audit. However, he said it will be a few weeks before they can get the report to Hatfield because they are just over their ears in, in work.
Well, if the delay is at their end and not our end, it's all right, right?
Yeah, that's right, right. Yeah. So, and I did touch base with, with the accountant and, and she's still, you know, tying up the, the reports, year-end reports, and said she's certainly giving it her best effort to submit free cash.
I would imagine that if either the accountant or Tony Roselli during the audit had any, well, I know they had some, some questions and some clarifications that Sharon helped them with because they said that at our meeting.
Right.
But I mean, if there was anything major, we, they would have told you, who would have told us type thing.
Yes, absolutely.
So we're basically.
And that's, yeah.
Just sailing along.
Yeah. And that's what we had believed because we hadn't heard from him. But you know, it still is, you know, still worth to a follow-up with, with Mr. Roselli and.
Yep.
So, yeah.
That's great. Nice work, everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. Sharon, did you have anything you wanted to add? These, these updates are getting shorter and shorter. It's, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. So the hazard mitigation planning grant?
Yes. So I had submitted, I think it was in December, a, a application on behalf of the town for, well, consulted with, with the, the fire chief and DPW and police chief. Town's hazard mitigation plan is just that, a plan. We're just looking to, to update it. We're not recreating, creating it. So our application to, to the state was for a, a project cost of, what was it, 21,000, I think.
Yeah, 21,000.
Yeah, 21,000. And the FEMA award is 15,750.
Okay.
And will be reimbursed up to 70% of the approved allowable, eligible costs. So the town's, town share can be either cash or in kind. And usually, it's, it's the participation, police chief, DPW, director, fire chief at our meetings. I'll be issuing an RFP to hire a vendor to work with, with the town. In the past, we have used Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So again, it's, it's just an update. The contract documents are in the signature folder.
Well, and I'm looking at the hazards that will be addressed, and there are two that were discussed.
We identified.
At the MVP meetings, which is great. So, which is looking at Connecticut River and Mill River flooding and establish an accurate system for monitoring. And this, this, this is for establishing backup power supply at the town sewage pumping stations. But, you know, making sure we protected the wastewater treatment plant was part of that. So that's, that's great.
We can certainly look at other, other areas of that plan. Matter of fact, Stephen Gunn was still the fire chief because it was the conversation I had with Stephen at the time when we started the process of the fly.
Yeah. Okay.
Good job, Marlene. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Grants are a lot of work. And I don't think people, if you've never had the pleasure of working on grants, and I, I do at work, it's, they're a lot of work in the.
They are. And then the reporting.
And then the reporting is unbelievable.
The request for reimbursement and the reporting, quarterly reporting, yeah, you have to stay on top of that.
So it's, it's really a, a great thing that you guys are so on top of grants. I think you do a good job. And Phil does a good job with grants.
Yes, he does.
So, but they, they're not easy money.
Yeah.
They're not easy money.
You have to work for it.
You do have to work for it.
Yes. I would just ask that the board would approve that contract.
Sure.
With, with the state and then the documents can be signed later.
So I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the hazard mitigation with, with the state.
With the state.
Yep.
Massachusetts Emergency Management.
Yep.
So motions have been, been, been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Marlene.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
And others that are involved. But yeah, thank you very much.
It says that it's 19,000 gallons of water in the pool.
Really? I might have to come, I might have to submit a, an amendment for mine now. It's like 14 or 15, I don't know.
Okay, so this is the contract here, Marlene, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Actually, I think mine's 18 by, maybe it's 15 by 30.
Does this just need my, this one here looks like it's just my signature.
At the bottom, yes.
Okay, so next we have the town hall conference and meeting space.
So I've left that on there as continued old business. But I just wanted to, to say that, you know, thank you. You visited the upstairs two weeks ago. I have had a conversation with the Council on Aging Director. She recently expressed an interest in if that space will be available, that it would be adequate for particularly the time during this pandemic, as opposed to using this, because the space is not large enough to accommodate exercise classes up there. They'd certainly be able to spread people out. For the number of people that do participate, that would be very adequate to hold the exercise classes up there. So just again, another, you know, request or use for that space up there.
Use for that space, yeah.
So I wanted to, to mention that.
Well, I'm all for, you know, maximizing our use of this building, but also for, you know, offering up any kind of space that's safe for people to get back to some of their normal activities. So.
And just an FYI, I just recently extended our lease agreement with the five colleges. We are leasing space there for the historical artifacts and we're still leasing space at Benson's. But I extended the contract to the end of the year, December, well, for a couple of reasons. One, because of the delay with the fire pump
Right.
Control panel and, and then just, you know, needing time to, matter of fact, this is a whole project has
Figured things out.
Closed out.
Even the end of the year is going to be here before you know it.
Yes, it will.
So that's
So just something to keep in mind that we have those leases and.
Okay. Special town meeting warrant. So we have a copy of the warrant here. There's only two articles. We've discussed it, discusses at previous meetings, but the first article is to acquire the easements necessary for the Route 5 and 10 Water and Sewer Project. And then the second article is authorizing a lease for some equipment and vehicles. And just so people are aware, there's no money associated with the article regarding the leasing of the equipment. It's already in the budget. This is just formality of, of allowing us to do that. And they're vehicles for the DPW and the school department.
Right.
So the meeting should be fairly quick. You know, it will be outside November 21st.
First at 11 o'clock at the pavilion.
You know, in all likelihood, it'll be a little chilly. So anyway, I guess first we should accept the warrant and then we can talk about the quorum requirement.
I'll make a motion to accept the warrant as, as presented.
And I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm just not sure we said the time. So it's Saturday, the 21st of November at 11 o'clock in the morning. You may have said it, I just, I missed it.
I didn't. And it will be held at the pavilion.
Yes.
So that we can have places to sit but be spread out. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brian, you gotta, oh, you did.
That's for Ed.
Oh, I thought Ed signed it already. Did you sign that?
No.
Okay, so great. So now we need to, because this is, you know, another town meeting happening during COVID restrictions, because it's also, you know, outdoors and it's a short warrant, I think it is appropriate for us to invoke the provisions that are allowed by the Commonwealth to decrease our quorum. We can reduce it to as much as 10% of what it would be. 75 is our quorum, 10% would be 7.5 people, which would be eight people. You know, Larry did pipe in in the beginning that eight people would be the, technically it could, you could literally have a town meeting with the five finance committee members and the three select board members. We clearly, we want participation. So I think that, you know, maybe setting it a little higher than that, just to make sure that we do have some public participation, but I don't want to set it so high that we're not able to make quorum and not have the meeting because this issue of the easements is very timely. So we do have to get this done. So I guess I would think maybe 12 people. I don't know.
I, I don't disagree with what you said and I don't disagree with, with what Larry said
Yeah.
Earlier, but by the same token, I, I would just assume that, you know, if, if we can go to, just by reducing it is just to make sure we can have a town meeting.
Right.
It's, it's not to leave anybody out. In fact, we want as many people to come as possible, like we do for all our town meetings. So I'm fine just going with, with what the state has, has allowed other communities to do, which is the 10%.
Right.
Which would, which would be eight people. I have no doubt we'll have many, many more than that.
Yeah, I, I'm confident we'll have more participation. So I see your point that it protects us
Well, exactly.
On the off chance that it's really inclement weather and people don't come. I mean, you just don't know. So I, I see your point too. I see Larry's point, I see Brian's.
I do, yeah. I, I can see, yeah.
You know, I think that we could maybe accomplish both things by, like you say, setting it at the 10%, but really encouraging people
Yeah.
To come and participate.
Absolutely.
Well, let's say you're saying eight, you're saying 12, Meadow Ground's 10, right? So I mean.
There's Ed splitting the difference.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm fine with 10.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that the board is selecting with the approval of the moderator, reduce the quorum during the COVID-19 crisis for the November 10, excuse me, for the November 21st, 2020 special town meeting to 10 people of what it otherwise would have been and pursuant to the Haffield bylaws, which specifies a quorum of 75, the said quorum shall be 10.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
But I just want to say, this isn't, this doesn't mean only 10 people come.
No, 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 no.
Whoever comes, comes. We can have up to 100 on the outside because we're a low-risk community.
Right, wear a mask.
In order to act
But this is time-sensitive. It's $2 million on the mask grant. We don't want to mess that up. I don't want to mess up getting $2 million and so this is why it's important. We got to move along with this. That's all.
Yeah, I, I think, I, like I say, I think Larry's point is well-taken, but you know, I think we'll have more people. I think we'll be fine.
And of course, we're publicly discussing it. So it's not like it's a secret behind closed doors type of action we're taking.
No, and we certainly encourage people to come and participate in this process.
Please do.
Okay. Review human resource policies.
So this is the, a draft of the temporary telework policy that we've been reviewing and, you know, it was
Excuse me.
You know, recommended that be reviewed at the next department head meeting, which we, we did. The department head meeting last wasn't too well-attended, but those that were, were present, I think really it was only the police chief. Fire chief didn't make it and Sharon, I know, had, had input. But I know the police, police chief and fire chief pretty much have the same, share the same thoughts.
Right. I mean, this, this is really not a policy that would ever
And it would exclude
Yeah, affect them.
Essential employees, you know, or emergency personnel.
I don't feel that that meeting was adequate for us to be able to move on. So I think we need to, you know, and I had, I had talked with Carrie earlier and we were talking about the, the new restrictions she was talking about and
Yeah.
Sending the notice out to employees. And my thought was that, you know, maybe it's time for a, a more mandatory department heads meeting. And I think both of these issues could be discussed there so that department heads are very clear about the new COVID recommendations. And also, it would be a good time to then talk to them about this. So obviously, if we're going to do it, it has to be timely because the COVID, so I don't know, you know, maybe you and I can talk tomorrow about some times to do that. But I don't want to move forward on this without better input from more department heads. And, and it's just a good opportunity to get two things done at once.
Well, and, and just to add to that, you know, when you say more input from department heads, this really, this policy would be applicable, well, to the board of selectmen, but elected boards or elected officials
Yes, of course.
As well. So, and, and I would expect that the elected, elected board or committee would have received the same policy and reviewed it.
Yes. But I want to be very clear with
Yes.
Everybody what we're intending to accomplish with this policy. So I think we need to come together and talk about that.
I, if I may, and I think part of your conversation as the department heads and Marlene and Diana, I mean, Carrie brought up a good point, which is if people don't feel well, they should stay home, right? It's cold and flu season, it's COVID season. So, so part of that, your conversation could be while, while we're working on putting a true policy into place and trying to figure it out, it could be if somebody calls and says, hey, listen, somebody in my family has, has the symptoms, so I'm staying home today. So is that going to be something where depending on what their role is in our, as a town employee, depending on what their role is, they may be able to work remotely versus taking the PTO? I mean, you know, I think those might be some of the
That's, to me, that seems like
That's a reason for it, right.
This is a perf, that's a perfect example
Right.
Of why we would institute something like that, particularly if you're home because it's a family member's thing.
Right.
So you're
Unless you're really sick, then you should take a sick day.
Yeah, if you're sick, you should be sick. But if you're, you know, I don't know, Sharon's
Self-quarantining or, or staying home to not potentially spread it.
You're shaking your head.
Because it is very clearly stated in the Family First Recovery Coronavirus Act that if you are out quarantined and we have to pay you, you are not to be doing work also.
Oh.
And this is the problem. This is why Carrie brought up earlier that I'm running into, is that people are out on this leave, just like, just like a Family Medical Leave Act. You cannot work and be on leave. We checked this with legal, Marlene knows, we had to check this back in March.
You're not on leave. You're just, you're just working remotely.
If you are quarantining though, that, this is, that's where it gets very careful. If you have a family member who is sick and has COVID, then you are part of the Family First Recovery.
Have symptoms. They don't necessarily have COVID.
But that's why you've got to be very careful because I had this situation currently at the school. An employee has a child who has symptoms. Carrie is telling them, they have to quarantine as the COVID coordinator.
Right.
Therefore, they do fall under the implied, the policy.
Are they working remotely though?
It does not matter if they're working remotely.
Excuse me, but the child has COVID?
No, the child has symptoms and is getting, and we're in the waiting period for the test. So the COVID coordinator has told that person, there's five reasons you can be out for this policy. Number one says federal, state, federal, state or town, in our case, but that's the mandate of why you're home. Then there's a doctor's one, then you have a sick child because it turns into whether or not you get full pay or two-thirds pay and whether they have to use their sick time or they don't have to use their sick
Okay, so we're getting in the weeds on something
Right.
That has nothing to do really with the town policy.
Well, it does. If you're saying that people are staying home because they're
Well, they're not setting anything tonight.
Exactly.
We were just having a conversation about, so we're
So you're telling, if employee calls you and says their kid has symptoms, they need to be in contact with Carrie and Carrie makes, that's what you've given her the power to make those decisions, whether it's per the town or not per the town.
Oh, may I, may I?
Yes.
I'm just, instead of getting everything complicated on this, the whole purpose of this
Larry, can you mute?
That's not where it is, Mike Cahill.
Mike, could you mute, please?
Your, your audio.
Sorry, Larry.
The, the whole purpose of this was just to have something in place in case there's a situation where you have to have certain town business conducted and a person happens to be at home and there is something they can do. There's something that a report has to, I mean, as needs basis.
So we'll deal with the COVID aspect of this. That's not what we're discussing tonight, but I'm saying
You mentioned the other day, an example that someone threw their back out. If they're on a Family Medical Leave Act, they cannot be doing work for the town. Even if it's me who has all these responsibilities, if I'm out sick, you can't ask me to do work if I'm out on that leave. We've got, towns have gotten in trouble for this.
That's not what we're saying either.
Not, we wouldn't, we would never do that.
We would not say you have to do this work.
Right.
It's just the opposite.
But even if I offered to do the work.
Nope, nope. That's not, that's, so this isn't probably the conversation that we meant to have now.
This is not, this is, this is the conversation for the department.
Sharon, all I would say is it's the reverse. If you called and said, I threw my back out, I need to stay home for a couple of days, can I work remotely? That's what we're talking about. Not that you're home or anybody on
Right.
Family Medical Leave Act and we're saying you still have to work.
Yeah, no, no.
That's not what we're saying at all.
That's not what we're saying.
That's what I was trying to say.
COVID is different that we have, there's very certain rules that
It's almost like a case
Just don't want us to get in trouble.
Kind of like a case-by-case, I mean, we need a policy and then, yeah.
All of this ultimately will be reviewed by council. That's
I just want to put it out there.
So if that was a bad example, then it was just a bad example. It didn't mean that we were setting any kind of policy tonight.
We just need to, each case is exactly like you said, Brian, specific. So that's why she gets to make, I don't want to know about anybody's anything. I just need to make sure we're doing the rules that I was asked to follow.
Understood. We appreciate that.
And protecting the employees. That's all.
Madam Chair.
A tool, another tool that could be used if it's really needed. That's all. It's rare incidences.
Do we take like a two-minute?
Yeah, could we take a break, please? Are we back? And that was our, so, sorry, we just had to take a quick break. Our, that was our last agenda item. So we will, obviously, obviously this requires some more discussion and the next junction or juncture for that would be with department heads. And so we'll, Marlene and I will try to schedule that sooner rather than later.
Foxing.
If we're going to do it in conjunction with these COVID, new COVID recommendations. So that is it for the agenda tonight.
I'll make a motion to adjourn then.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.